City of Norco, City Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, October 17th. Call to order and roll call.
Councilmembers Newton, Hannah, Bash, Mayor Portem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman, all present.
Are there any speaker cards for a closed session?
No cards, Mayor.
No cards. Council will recess back to closed session. The City Council will come back in order, return from the closed session, and reconvene from there. Reports of action taken in closed session? The City Attorney?
Yes, the City Council considered the matter that's listed on the agenda in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Newton.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and entering the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for Elder Sam Letcher from the Norco Church of the Open Doors.
Amen, praise God. We know that prayer changes things. Heavenly Father, we thank you, and we just bless your name that everyone is able to be here that's here today, Lord. We ask you for your guidance, and we ask you for your blessings. So, Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this beautiful city of Norco, bless each and every official that's here. Matter of fact, Lord, everybody that's in this building, we ask you to bless them, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Sam. Now, I have the privilege to meet Mr. DeRosa. I'm sorry. I'm thinking baseball. Yeah, I'm thinking baseball. Down there on the...
Sorry? Down here. And if I can have Jennifer Wells and anybody else you have with you to come up? Go ahead and stand right over here, and the mayor's going to come over on this side.
This is Kristi.
Hi, Kristi. Okay, so, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Scott DeRosa with the Norco Economic Development Advisory Council. I'm here to assist Mayor Hoffman with the presentation of this month's Business Appreciation Award being presented to Backcountry Chiropractors. All right, so usually I go ahead and do, or I communicate with the recipient to make sure I have facts and information correct and so forth, and I just do a small blab. But tonight, I'm doing it a little bit differently, because when she responded back, she gave me so much detailed information, and the story was so compelling, and I thought, "I'm just going to read the email."
Oh, no!
What the cool little twist in that?
Okay, okay. Twist away.
The clock is ticking. All right, so Jennifer writes to me, "I purchased the building on the corner of Temescal and Sixth Street in 2009 as an investment for my future, so I could establish a practice and be able to move," I'm sorry, "be able to have rental income into my retirement versus renting space from other chiropractors. After licensure, I worked as an employee for a few years. I then rented space from a Diamond Bar chiropractor during the years of September 1995 until March 2011. About a year and a half prior to purchasing the Norco building, I also rented space from a chiropractor located on Hamner. On my days off from the Diamond Bar office, I would work at the Norco office to build up my local clientele base. A patient of mine, who was a contractor, helped me rehabilitate the Diamond Bar office that I was leasing or renting. We worked together successfully on that project, which led to him dreaming of building me an office of my own someday. He and I worked together on the concept and design of the Norco building that I purchased. The original building basically had to be torn down because it didn't meet the current code and ADA requirements. With the approval of the Building Commission, we then designed the building and began a long, expensive project of tearing it down and rebuilding it, keeping it within the same footprint as before. It was a challenge to configure. Without the help of the Norco grant for signage and facade improvement, I would not have been able to make this, I would not have been able to make it as beautiful and well-built as it is. I am eternally grateful for the grant, and I'm so happy that the City of Norco appreciates all the blood, sweat, and tears that went into this project. I was able to open my doors January 3, 2011, and it was an immediate success which allowed me to walk away from my 16-year Diamond Bar practice within a few months of opening the Norco office. I've been involved with Horse Week for many years, as a contestant, a sponsor, a VIP sponsor, and a shoot sponsor. I was on the board and a participant of the Saddle and Harness Club in Norco for many years, and I spent many years in charge of the year-end banquet and award ceremony. I've also participated in all the Norco parades at various times, such as the Labor Day, Festival of Lights, and Horse Week, either riding my halflinger mule Jester or driving one of my carriages with my former halflinger stallion or gelding. I now only have the mule and am retired from driving carriages. I was also on a TV show called America's Favorite Trail Horse in 2011 with my mule Jester. He and I were the only contestants there representing Norco. We've participated in also many mule parades as well. Jester and I are always happy to represent Norco, Horstown USA whenever we can. So this summarizes the email, and I thought it was really wonderful, and she's been such a great contributor to our community in many assets or facets. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
The mayor's going to go ahead and give her the award, and the award reads, "The City of Norco hereby recognizes Backcountry Chiropractic, whose commitment to Norco is demonstrated through its care of patients, investment in Sixth Street, and respect for the traditions of Norco, Horstown USA." Again, thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Yeah. I just want to say, it takes a village to run a successful practice, because I'm only as good as my staff. So, thank you, Kristi, and Darlene, who is lost, can't find her way to the back of the building here, and my other staff member, Jackie, and my new massage therapist, Melanie. It's our pleasure to serve the people of Norco and the surrounding areas, and I'm eternally grateful to the mayor and City Council for always supporting me and our business, and I'm really happy to be a member of Norco community and participate any way I can. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you.
The one thing about her building, it is one of the success stories that we have from having the former redevelopment agency, because that was where the funds came from. So, we see that you are, you are the improvement on Sixth Street because of the former RDA. So, we appreciate what's happened. Thank you.
We got a picture.
Oh, great.
Right in front of the podium.
Yeah.
See, you're in time for pictures.
Right, right. Come for pictures. I think you, by the way.
Come on over here.
For the mayor.
Yeah, we got it even. Special recognition thing.
Thank you. Thank you again. Really appreciate it.
And if you're a man, don't stare in front of Jester, because he don't like men.
Yeah, just for those who don't like men.
He don't like men. Don't say that. Her big guy about took me out one time at a obstacle course. She goes, "Well, he doesn't like men." Yeah, I figured that out. All right, moving down the line. Presentations. Chad, this is you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I was asked to give a presentation regarding our capital improvement program and the outreach that we try to do to provide information. As the council knows, back in 2016, you authorized Public Works, myself, to hire consultants to build our GIS system. We didn't have one before, and that's our geographical information system, which basically is our mapping of all our assets in the city. So, we did that over the last two years, and part of that process, we wanted to see how we can carry that information, not just internally, but also be able to provide that information externally to the public. So, what we've done is added a feature on our websites under Capital Improvement Project, and I'll show you how to find that. So, basically, if you go under City Hall, under Public Works, you come down here to Capital Projects, and click this, you will get all the information related to our current and past capital projects that we've done over the last two years. We basically give a general intro, talking about what we do and what our responsibilities are for capital projects, and then below that, we have basically this link here, which is our, oops, clicked out on that by mistake. Should have touched that. Sorry. This normally will pop up and show you everything we have on here, but I was in there. So, basically, what this is, it gives you this view, and this is a compacted view, because it's in a smaller portion of a webpage, and you can view it on here and be interactive. It's got specific categories set, and I'll show those in a second, but I normally prefer to actually view it here at this link, and this gives it a full-page view, and it's not truncated in a smaller view of the webpage. There we go. So, this is what you'll see if you come on here, and basically, it gives you just a snapshot of the city, you know, just generally locating where all our projects are. These are all our current projects we have in the city. It tells you a count here. We have 45 current projects in this fiscal year. It will tell you what we did last year. These are all, in previous years, it's always completed projects, so we completed 25 projects last year, and you can click on each of these icons to directly go to that information, or you can click a category here to go to that information. You can also go to All, and it'll show you everything we have done or in the process of doing, which is at 71 projects. But in this case, I'll show 2018, 19. Also, right here is a report function you can have, so if you want to see this in a table format, you can go ahead and click Report, and it will give you that same information in tabular format, and you can print that out, save it as you like, and it'll have all that information that I'm going to show you in a second. So, that's, it's an easy way for people to download. You basically download it as an Excel file. So, we wanted to make sure it was, if somebody didn't want to look at it individual, they want to print out, you can print that out, and it'll, and it's always, as I change information, that information changes in there, so every time you come back, it'll be a new sheet. So, on here, what we've done is tried to do by categories. We have multiple categories. We have all the capital projects, or you can click just the street projects, and it'll highlight, it'll change the map and just show the street projects. It'll show you where all of those are. So, if you're interested specifically in an area where you live, let's say you live in near the bluff area, and you want to highlight and zoom in, you can say, "Oh, what's this project?" So, you can either click on the icon itself, and it'll open up the information, or you can go through this sheet itself, and it'll tell you basically information, gives you the project number, our actual, our account number that we give it far as a project number for our, in our CIP project, gives you the project title, gives you a brief description about what we're doing, you know, identifies it's a street project, it's for repair and maintenance, tells you the fiscal year, the funding source, and we also have, you know, planned start dates, theoretical, when we plan to do it, start it, when we plan to end it, our estimated budget, you know, for design, for construction. These are all estimated totals, and then later on, once we finish the project, we actually have actual costs that it actually caused, so we can show you what we estimated versus what it actually cost. We'll tell you the current phase it is, is in design, is it construction, is it closed out, how much percentage is completed, who's doing the project. So, in this case, sometimes Parks is doing a project and Public Works doing a project. This is citywide projects. So, we put in the contact information for that entity, so if you want to call and ask information, it's got either the email and/or the phone number. And then we indicate, like I said, we need actual start dates versus, you know, what the awarded cost was for design, the awarded construction cost, the total cost once the project's finished. We'll add comments about status, where we're at, and we try to go on a monthly basis, go in and update the information once a month, the beginning of the month. So, if you're interested in seeing the status, go at the beginning of the month, usually that first week, we try to make a point of going up there, updating each one of those projects, so you know what, where we stand in that. And so, it's meant to be fairly easy to use. You can close this, you can go to, say, "I want to see the park projects, where are those?" It'll again, highlight what there are. If there's one park project at this point, that's the Nils Knives Playground Equipment. If you want to see the water projects, same thing, it'll highlight where those are, and if you're interested in getting those specifics, you can either click the item itself, and it zooms into that area telling you where this is, and this is our Temescal Water Main Project, of where that's going to be, and it's actually, and that's a water project, but keep in mind, it's also a street project. So, as soon as I finish the water main, we're also going to be redoing Temescal, so that's included as a separate project, because it's a separate funding source. Streets is paying for that portion, so you'll actually find that same segment, except for this street here, this is a private road. All of Temescal will be a street project. So, we're breaking them out into what the funding source is. So, that'll have all the same information of where we stand on that project. So, but there's, like I said, there's all kinds of categories here that you can go through. You want to see our recycle water projects? We don't have any at this time that we're planning on. Sewer, we have a couple going on, and then we have some facility projects, I think one for Parks and then one for Public Works that we're working on. We have our storm drain projects. Again, this is all those different storm drains we have going on, trying to improve our drainage in the city, and again, has all that information, who's doing all that work. So, we want to make sure that it was an easy process to quickly click, get information, it wasn't really hard to read, and we wanted to recognize some people don't want to view it this way, they just want to see a paper copy. That's why we have that report there. So, again, you easily click it, it shows up, you can look for that project you're interested in, and again, you still have to sort through it and find it, and the interesting part in this, and I forgot to highlight, is that if you're on a category, and let's say if you're on all water, all capital projects, and you hit Report, it'll show all of those in that Excel spreadsheet. If you don't want all that information, you have to go through it. If you just click the actual category you're interested, in this case, Stormwater, and you click Report, it'll just give you those projects only. That's why this list is so much shorter. So, that's a way that you can easily not have to go through 70 projects and find what you want. You could just have that information alone. So, it really is meant to be intuitive and provide the information in the easiest manner possible. And again, we update it once a month. And then, on a side note, since I have this captive audience, I want to show, there's another area where you get information on capital projects, specifically Streets. Streets is on here as projects, but if you want to know the future of what streets are going to be done under Public Works for the street maintenance, oh, not Street, tree maintenance, Streets, sorry. Grabbed the wrong one. It'll be in City Hall, Public Works, and you come down here to, ah, stop it. Going too fast. Public Works, going along down. There we go. Street Moratorium. What this has is all the lists where there's currently a moratorium, but of where contractors can't come back in and pay without doing specific improvements, but it also has the current projects of streets that are being done, and this list is very expansive right now, because we're doing almost over 60 streets on the Slurysil project. Those will eventually go into that upper list up here, and we'll have prohibitions. But this is another way, if people are interested in knowing what streets are coming, this is the full five years of projects that we have planned out, because we want to make sure we're advising all the utility companies, if they have a project coming, they need to look at this list to plan and recognize they need to get their stuff done before I go out, and we do this work. So, we always indicate in here when we're thinking that that project is going to occur. So, in 2020, 21, if somebody's going to do anything on Hillside, they need to do it before I get out there. Otherwise, there's going to be restrictions on them doing any future work. So, this is meant to communicate mainly to contractors and utility companies, but it's also another, if you're talking to residents, they want to know information, this is another place. So, they can find the current streets for this current fiscal year on that one map we just went to, but this also will tell you all the streets, because again, it's trying to provide information to utilities. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer the questions you may have, but that's just, again, this is how we've tried to improve the outreach and communication to the public about what we're doing and what we're accomplishing.
Chad, I've used your, used both this one, the, this page and the other page, yeah, capital improvement page, and it's really a benefit. The one thing, and I might suggest, is to put trails, like the trail fencing, you didn't include that in any of your subjects. I don't know why.
Yeah, at the time, because when we, when I built this, I had, I didn't have it defined trails as far as where we were going to have it, but that would be another one as far as I should add in here now that we've actually identified the trails we want to do. I just forgot to put them in here.
Okay.
That's another one, you're absolutely right, I forgot to put it in here.
Okay, and that's all. I'll start down there. Greg, any questions? Kevin?
Really great job. So, we actually are fixing streets in the City of Norco?
Oh, yes.
Wow. I do have a question. How many cities have a system like this? Do most?
I do not know.
I'm just curious, because it's pretty, pretty, I'm going to call it Norco high-tech. Good job.
Robin?
You're welcome.
Burwen?
Good job. Well, over.
I might want to warn them on the paper, unless you got the real white stuff. It doesn't work.
That's why, again, you can download it on an Excel file, so that way you don't have to print it out.
But I, like I said, I enjoy using, that's why I wanted to share with everybody here to know that it's, it's out there for the residents to see what's going on, because before, for those who didn't, we, you'd have to go through prior CIP budgets to see what was projected in that thing. This is so much easier. It's one shop stop. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City Council Business, City Council Communications, Reports, and Regional Boards. Burwen, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A report on RTA, remember back Christmas, they started running a bus to Disneyland that starts over in San Bernardino, and now I think they're running 14 trips a day, and the ridership has gone way up. It's like in September, there's over 15,000 people rode the bus from San Bernardino to Disneyland and reversed, and since July, it's been 46,000. If you think about adding another bus that can go, or another, another couple of stops through there during the day, but a lot of those people riding that work out in the, around UCR, so that's what they've been trying to do, is get a bunch of people riding from Orange County into UCR and take cars off the road. And with Vector, this Friday morning, between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, they will do their normal spraying on the Eastvale side and the Norco side from the almost river road bridge past Silver Lakes on both sides, because they have a few spots over there where the, especially around the Eastvale neighborhoods, that the mosquitoes have really been bad. They've been that way for several years, but they've been spraying about two times a month like that. And RCTC, if you're paying attention, you can see a lot of construction making progress along the 15 freeway, and it hadn't even really, the full part of it hadn't even started yet. They're getting ready to start, they're trying to fix up the middle of it where they can start running their trucks in there and pouring concrete, so you'll be seeing some activity there in about another month. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Robin?
Nothing to report.
Kevin?
I attended my Norco College Advisory Committee meeting, and we have a new Norco member, now there's two. Most of the people on that committee are from Corona. Kathy Azavito is now a member. A couple of things that they're beginning to try to do is they, they still would like to make the CRC the education center for the entire state correctional, state correctional system. They're looking at maybe taking over the old Corman Quarters, the old Ingalls, and they would like to know what the historic status on that is, and so I'm going to maybe send an email tomorrow to Roger to maybe have the Historic Commission maybe follow-up on where the Navy is in terms of what their determination's going to be through FIPO, which is the Federal Preservation Officer for the Navy, and whether or not we need to move forward on just placing the state stuff. The interesting thing is, is as it stands right now, everything has to be treated as if it is on the National Register, so there's pros and cons whether or not to move forward. He still has a lot of ideas that he's pushing forward, and I'll keep you guys apprised of those. As you know, this Friday, we have, we begin our wheelchair basketball tournament. The mayor, I'm so happy to hear, is, we're going to do, instead of the prison on the original court, we're going to be doing an exhibition game at Norco High School, and that's going to be really cool. And then, Sunday for the championship game, we have a man named Edward Santio, who's 94 years old, who we, who is still alive and was in that game playing for Birmingham, the opposing team, and he's going to be there Sunday, we hope, to hand out the trophies. And then, I do the short straw, and I went to the Navy Ball on Saturday night, and it was actually a very good event, and for the first time in all of the years that I've been going to the Navy Ball, they didn't say the Navy of the Inland Empire, they didn't say the Navy of Riverside, they didn't say the Navy of Corona. They said the Navy in Norco over and over again, and so I was very happy, even though I was the only person from Norco there. But that's a huge, after six years of going to that thing, that's the first time we've had that, so it was, it was actually a lot of fun, and Captain Brombeck was there and was so grateful at how he was treated Saturday morning by the mayor. He said, "Be sure to thank the mayor, thank the council." He and the other captain had a dolke, had a great time, and they really appreciated that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, we had the Chino de Salter Board Meeting, and most of the meeting was taken up in closed session. We're still dealing with which direction to go with our, our general manager who's resigned, and so right now, it's, we're looking at going with a search firm that is still ongoing to replace him, and also, we are meeting and considering if we just go with an interim city, or, I'm sorry, an interim general manager at this time, and then we can look at the overall cost impacts, if this would be a direction to go, and we'll just see how it comes out, if it's going to save us any money or not. So, that's where it lies right now. The rest of that all remained in closed session. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, well, I, piggybacking on the correctional facility over here, we had our bimonthly meeting, and this time, we had fire and sheriff personnel there. We got an update on the disturbances there regarding the reclassification of the inmates and updates. So, it was one of these, more or less, here's an update and a good meet and greet for our safety, public safety personnel, so they understand what's going on in the prison. It's nice to know, so they know who's going to come and what, meet and who your friends are type of a situation. So, that's what that was all about. They're going to rethink the whole plan and try to come up with a better way of reclassifying these guys, so there's not as many disturbances. So, that was one. I would, with the Public Works Director, we turned to the Riqua teleconference, again, all closed sessions. Yeah, you got issues on your guys, we got issues on ours. You know, getting rid of human waste is expensive. Then, we attended the, most of us all attended the Norco Citizens Patrol Luncheon, and I'm going to let Lieutenant share a little bit about his team.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. So, every year, we celebrate our Norco citizens on patrol, and we thank them for all the hard work that they put into their city, and I understand that there are probably some people that don't know exactly what they do. Well, essentially, they're volunteers, they're the eyes and the ears of the sheriff. Though they take no enforcement action, they're a vital part of our overall program and provide a tremendous service to the citizens of Norco, and we're very grateful for what they do, and they, they basically do things, they do traffic control at crime scenes, at collisions, they're involved in community events, they patrol, no, they don't take any enforcement action, they, they do call us when they have issues, so we have really good communication. We're very grateful for them, and they free up our staff with some of the more mundane things that would keep us from being able to attack the higher priority issues. So, on Sunday, October 7, we were honored to be a part of the Norco Citizens Patrol Annual Banquet, celebrating their 23rd year of service to the City of Norco. It was a great opportunity for us to thank our volunteers for the tremendous service they provide, and in attendance was all the City Council, so I thank you very much all for being there and being a part of that program. I know they're very grateful for that, and I think that it's very clear that they have tremendous support from City Council, so thank you for that. Part of our, what we do during that time is we recognize a few of the volunteers for their extraordinary service. We used to have an individual named Adolf Weisag, he was a valuable member of the Norco Citizens on Patrol. He passed some time ago, but he was so, he was so well-liked in, in what he provided to the program, that they named an award after him, and so it's a coveted award, and it's basically the highest award that we provide to our citizens on patrol during the banquet. And so, this year, it was Debbie Gardner, she's not here, and sometimes we do have our volunteers in the office, or I'm sorry, in council chambers during the meetings, but she was one of the recipients, as well as Al Wan, for Volunteer of the Year, and both of them provide tremendous service, and we're very, very grateful for the program. And some statistics I know the mayor was interested in, for 2017, our NCP provided 217 days
So that's what that was all about. They're going to rethink the whole plan and try to come up with a better way of reclassifying these guys so there's not as many disturbances. So that was one. I would, with Public Works Director, return of the Riqua teleconference, again, all closed sessions. Yeah, you got issues on your guys, we got issues on ours. You know, getting rid of human waste is expensive. Then we attended the, most of us all attended the Norco Citizens Patrol Luncheon, and I'm going to let Lieutenant share a little bit about his team.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. So every year, we celebrate the Norco citizens on patrol, and we thank them for all the hard work that they put into their city. And I understand that there are probably some people that don't know exactly what they do. Well, essentially, they're volunteers. They're the eyes and the ears of the sheriff. Though they take no enforcement action, they're a vital part of our overall program and provide a tremendous service to the citizens of Norco. And we're very grateful for what they do. And they basically do things, they do traffic control at crime scenes, at collisions, they're involved in community events, they patrol. No, they don't take any enforcement action. They do call us when they have issues. So we have really good communication. We're very grateful for them. And they free up our staff with some of the more mundane things that would keep us from being able to attack the higher priority issues. So on Sunday, October 7th, we were honored to be a part of the Norco Citizens Patrol Annual Banquet, celebrating their 23rd year of service to the city of Norco. It was a great opportunity for us to thank our volunteers for the tremendous service they provide. And in attendance was all the City Council, so I thank you very much all for being there and being a part of that program. I know they're very grateful for that, and I think that it's very clear that they have tremendous support from City Council. So thank you for that. Part of our, what we do during that time is we recognize a few of the volunteers for their extraordinary service. We used to have an individual named Adolf Wysock. He was a valuable member of the Norco Citizens on Patrol. He passed some time ago, but he was so, he was so well-liked in what he provided to the program that they named an award after him. And so it's a coveted award, and it's basically the highest award that we provide to our citizens on patrol during the banquet. And so this year, it was Debbie Gardner. She's not here. And sometimes we do have our volunteers in the office, or I'm sorry, in council chambers during the meetings. But she was one of the recipients, as well as Al Wan, for Volunteer of the Year. And both of them provide tremendous service, and we're very, very grateful for the program. And some statistics I know the mayor was interested in. For 2017, our NCP provided 217 days on patrol. They drove 13,023 miles throughout the city, and they volunteered a total of 5,702 hours. Thank you.
Thank you. No, those guys are, they're great. We appreciate them. To finish mine up, like Kevin said, we had the Navy Birthday Celebration last Saturday. Want to thank Bonnie and the Norco Horsemen Association back there, along with members of the Norco Man of Posse, Mike Williams that led the ride, along with the NART team that stood by, and everybody else that showed up there and helped celebrate the 243 years of the Navy. And let me see, one more. Oh, you're going to do Veterans Day, Jeff, okay? And then I want to remind everybody that this Saturday, come meet Chad. Cheryl's going to be there doing shredding at our Community Day cleanup. You can come down and bring your truckloads. I'm going to personally unload some of them, so come on down. We're going to clean up Norco one truck at a time, so we appreciate it. On a sad note for us, good note for Jeff and his wife Sue Anderson from Wounded Warriors. They're moving, they moved to Texas. He left today. And so Wounded Warriors is moving from Norco to Texas. And if you've never seen, he was the guy doing, saving one veteran, one dog at a time. Their base is in Texas now, but he plans to come back here soon to give a dog another dog. So Jeff and Sue will be really missed by us in the local community. I'll miss seeing him hop around on his dogs around the park all the time. So, and then a final thing, I want to congratulate Norco High School for doing a tremendous job in hosting these Chinese educators that came from Shanghai, China. 20-plus members, they're teachers. They were amazed at what we can provide, especially when they went through the agricultural program there at Mrs. G's class. And the students, and I have to say, your son did an excellent job. He's a credit to the FFA and to you and John. So good job in hosting them and educating them. They were just, the number of people that live in Shanghai and these communities and the number of students that go through, we can't fathom the numbers, how many people they pack in there. Just unbelievable. When they saw the little farm, I mean, there at the, and they go, oh, he grows flowers? No vegetables there, just flowers? I mean, that's, how big's your little grass area there? But the little grass area? It's small. And to them, to use that just to grow grass and flowers, they just couldn't think of that because they, land is so precious to them. So it was a good exchange of ideas, so I appreciate that. All right, moving on to agenda item number two, City Council's Consent Calendars. I ask if any items be pulled? Not hearing any? Do I have a motion?
I've got to call E and F.
E and F? Any more? Do I have a second?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Greg, you pulled E.
Thanks. So Brian, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on this, but also to bring forward to council that Brian and I have discussed on this item and on item F, is that at the senior center, we had, about 10 years ago, we had two electric car chargers that were antiquated, ahead of our time 10 years ago. But today, they're antiquated and in disrepair. So one of my questions is, since we're switching this over from Pike's Peak to the senior center, how can we incorporate and update electric chargers at the senior center?
It's a good question. Right now, City Manager has Roger and I working on a couple of different grants. And there's the Green Regional Initiative Project, the Cal EVIP, and the also, the Southern California Initiative Project. So between those, we are looking at more than one location in the city. The senior center is one location. One of the grants allows for, because there's multiple housing with the senior housing, and some of our seniors do drive, it gives them the ability to charge their vehicle. So that site becomes eligible for that. Another location is a location at City Hall with school district, and we would work with them on a particular location. Two other locations would be a location on Hamner at the Community Center parking ride or overflow parking area. And then the last one we've looked at is putting one up at Ingalls. And so those are four locations. And the way that some of these grants work is that they encourage doing multiple ones, particularly those that would be related to workplace locations. And as we see today, we're seeing more and more vehicles that do use charging stations. So that's, basically, that's what we would be looking at as far as funding those locations for power. The grant helps you with the planning, the engineering, and also does funding for the construction project.
Yes, my concern is like, you know, where we have the moratorium on streets now that have been repaired, will we be able to coordinate doing that work before we redo the parking
For example, at the senior center, the power's already existing there. So we wouldn't have to do any dig up, nothing from the street.
We wouldn't have to tear anything.
Utilities on site. And almost in every one of those locations, there is utility on site. That's why they become a lot more advantageous for us to use us.
Okay. And then just, not related to this, but just a question that came up. I'm sure it wasn't an electric car that ran into the building.
Yes, sir.
What is the status of that repair?
Contractor shows up Monday for mobilization, and they start work Tuesday of next week.
Good. Okay, that's, my only questions I had on this.
Just to add to the, just to the grant program, there's also another phase which allows, the issue is, how do you maintain the units in the future? And so the way, from the very first ones we had, which the burden of that utility cost and everything was on the city. Now, there's a program where you're, virtually, your phone app, if you, for lack of a better word, like you do Starbucks or something, you order, pre-order it, it tells you if it's available. You go park in there, you push the button, and it automatically charges it to your phone. The city actually gets a percentage back of that as well.
Right. I'm aware of that.
A couple of different ways of doing it, and that'll be part of the planning process.
Okay, good. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. First and a second?
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
And Greg, you pulled F?
Yeah, also on F. We, I guess kind of, unless I have my years and numbers messed up here, we were looking at $70,969 for this 2019, 2020. And the request for the program, this is at Engel Park, the parking pads and the Parks and Rec Service Leader.
That's correct.
That puts it at $77,000.
The actual, what we project, and right now, going into 1920, they won't give us a final number. They can only give us a potential project estimate. So basically, the $10,645 is for the allocation for the Senior Recreation Community Service Leader at the senior center. And then we identified, because that's all that would be left, 25% can go to community, the rest goes to capital projects. And there are specific criteria in which that capital project money can only be used for. In this case, $60,000 would be used, or $60,233. The rest of that, we identify because that's in-kind contribution from city staff. So we put a number on the rest of the value. So the total allocation that we would be looking at would be a little over $70,000. However, we won't even know until probably close to July of next year.
All right.
So it's our best, in fact, actually, we will have to adjust based on what they actually give us. It's been very rare in my experience that they've given us more.
Right, right.
And that's really what it comes down to.
So this is just a projection where we don't have a firm cost on the building pads or anything like that?
No, no. And part of the estimated money in here is for engineering. So that would be, once we have, what the county will do is that they will give us an approval based on this action. That allows us to at least preliminary do some of the final analysis before we actually go to engineering drawings. We really can't do that until we get actual final approval, which we're not going to see until June of next year. But by the time we get through the county's process, and then we have, then this, what the county does is then submits that to HUD. So the federal process takes a while, and by the time we get our information back, it's usually around June of next year.
All right.
And then, again, you would see a contract come before you around this time next year, which would sign an agreement into allowing those funds to be available to be spent.
Thank you, Brian. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have first and a second.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
That brings us to item number four, Public Comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete a speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take actions relative to any general public comment. Cards? Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. Before I get started, I just wanted to mention something really quick. Some news came out last week. I wasn't sure if you guys were aware of it. The District Attorney for Riverside County found that the grand jury was factually incorrect. I wasn't sure if you guys had heard that, so I thought that might be important. So you might want to check up on that because that was kind of good news, I think. So while I'm up here, I wanted to let you know, this is literally hot off the press. The ink is still dry, or wet, and it's drying right now, but brand-new information for Veterans Day. I know you thought I was going to say that the ceremony starts at 10:00. The ceremony does start at 10:00. But we've invited Grace Fellowship Church to come and hold church services at 8:30 prior to the ceremony. This is the 100th anniversary. It falls on a Sunday. We didn't want people to have to pick between going to church or coming to the ceremony, so we said, let's do both. And Pastor Phil Wozniak graciously accepted our invitation, and they will have first, their first service at 8:30 before going back to the home church for their 10:00 service. But we can come early, have church service at the memorial, and then we can celebrate and commemorate the 100th anniversary of Veterans Day. It's a coincidence, but it's not going to fall on a Sunday again until 2029 because in seven years, when it's probably about to fall, it's going to be a leap year, so it skips over Sunday. So we won't do this again probably for quite a while, so it's a special ceremony. And I just wanted to make sure you were aware of this special edition, so if you thought you were getting up early on Sunday, you can get up a little earlier, come have church with us. And they'll have the worship team there. It'll be a full, wonderful service. That's where I go to church, so I can say a little bit with a bias that it's going to be a good service. They had a great time being invited to do services up at the Horse Affair. And they, last year, for the first time, they did one service. This year, they actually did both services up there, and it was very well-received. So we had some great people come up and say, why don't we do that at the memorial? So they've accepted. So look forward to seeing you on Sunday, November 11th, at 8:30 for church.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, and staff. Basically, I just wanted to compliment Chad and staff for that wonderful spreadsheet that they created for online. I think it's going to be a great asset for us, as well as compliment the Measure R when it does pass. That's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Mayor, that concludes Public Comments.
All right, closed Public Comments. Bring her back here. Moving down to discussion action items. Item 5A, Accept Bids and Awards Contract for the Second Street Sidewalk Improvement Projects Located at the Interstate 15 Northbound Audra Offramps. Chad, that's you.
Mr. Mayor, so this is a long-time project coming. Back in 2014, I think it's 14, maybe 15, the city was, provided a grant from Caltrans to help pay for the removal of the mound that is on Second Street at the off-ramp. Do you have that picture? So in case anybody's not familiar, there's the famous mound that sits there, blocks the pedestrian crossways. Basically, we'd explained to Caltrans for years is that folks who come along that side from, go in either direction, have to basically walk almost into the street, and it's dangerous. So after several years of trying to get this through Caltrans, we finally got it through. We got awards done, and that's what we're asking you to approve today. We originally, and this goes into the next agenda item, we originally were trying to bring both. And for some reason, I forgot about this project when it came to budget time. I just didn't have it on my radar as far as putting it on there. I knew I was doing it, but I didn't include the funding source. So I was, intended to bring a resolution forward to approve adding it as a project and also to add the funding for that project, which includes the grant money from Caltrans and basically just moving money around from existing projects and street fund to pay for it. Unfortunately, the press enterprise did not publish our public notice announcement when they should have. So when they finally did it, almost six or seven days later, it was too late. We didn't meet the minimum notification requirements to hold that item. So that's why subsequently, the other agenda item I'm asking to carry over to the next meeting is, so we ended up splitting it apart. And the reason I did that is because I really wanted to get this approved tonight because as soon as I get it approved, I can send my letter to Caltrans and start the process of getting the money. I'd rather not wait a couple more weeks to start that process if we can. I'd rather get the money sooner. And then we'll, on the seventh day of November, we'll bring this item to actually get it on the approved, as approved project, the funding allocated, and to make sure the gene is happening, and make sure we have everything, our Ps and Qs dotted and everything. So we went this out to bid. We did get six bids. All American Asphalt was the lowest bidder. Coincidentally, they are also doing the widening that's going to occur on the off-ramp. They've been, already awarded the project by Caltrans to widen that off-ramp to three lanes. So they're actually, which is a good thing for us because we don't have to coordinate two different contractors going at the same time in the same area. All American's just going to do it all at once, and there's no coordination required of who gets first rights to do what and impacting that roadway. So All American's going to do the widening and changing that corner all at once. That, they expect to, All American expects to start probably not for several months because there's an eight to 12-week backlog on the new signal poles that they're waiting on. And so they really don't want to start until they at least get those poles in. So they're waiting on that. However, we are working with Caltrans. We're trying to convince them to actually give us some of their poles. And when these poles come in, we will basically give them back to them, so kind of swapping it, so maybe we can start sooner. So they're looking at that as an option. So for tonight, it's asking approval to accept all the bids that were provided, to award a contract to All American Asphalt, and give the city manager authorization to up to 10% for contingencies on any changes we might have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, have any questions? Burwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to see this is finally going to move forward, Chad. I know it's been a long, long time, and I can't tell much from that little hand-drawn map that we had in here, but it was a map that we had in here, but is the horse trail going to remain on Second Street there? Even with those other improvements that's possible to come there?
No, it cannot remain. One of the conditions by Caltrans is that we cannot have a horse trail on that roadway because they don't support bed crossings for equestrians, and they don't want anything if, so if, if we were going to maintain that trail to that corner, they would not approve our project. So part of this project is basically building the return, the corner, and adding some asphalt sidewalk up to where that trail fence you see there, and then, and they're fine with just that. As long as we're not promoting it as a trail, they'll accept it. But they don't want, they're not, they don't want anything that gives indication that it's a, for equestrian use because they don't support it. And that was something they were adamant about, that if we want this to be approved, we cannot identify that section as a trail. It's, it can be a pedestrian walkway, but not for a trail.
Okay, so the pedestrian walkway will come all the way from Valley View to that intersection?
Correct.
Because I remember when they put the auto mall in and did all the street improvements on Second Street, they did away with the horse trail under, along there by that 711 and under the freeway there. And I didn't know if that was going to include here, which I think has been closed for a while, has it not, the trail? Because it was too dangerous in there to...
Correct. I mean, really, almost once it was built, they just closed it because it was just becoming too much of a hazard.
Right, right. Yeah, well, myself, for the safety of the horses and the people that ride them, I'm glad to see that part of it happen, but I am glad to see this intersection finally get repaired because it's more and more traffic there all the time. And the three lanes that they're going to put on the ramp, will the middle lane be a, you can turn right or left, either one out of it, or how's that going to work?
Two left lanes and one right lane.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Robin?
Just a couple of questions. You mentioned that you were going to have to move some projects around as far as finding the additional funding. Do you know which projects are going to be delayed to make this one happen?
It will probably be the Hamner, I kind of have, the one project I have is an outlier that I wanted to do, but I might steal from that money to get other projects done, is Hamner Avenue between Third and Hidden Valley. That roadway is, for most of it's in decent condition. There's some areas in there that, that do need some work, but it's not as critical as others. So that's probably where I'll take some of that money. We're also getting savings as our project's getting bid. The money that we thought we needed, we're not using. But I won't have that amount known until the year gets through and I get those projects. Most of our street projects should be bid based of our current pace of getting the designs done, probably by the first of the year. And I'll have almost everything out, so I'll know by the beginning of the year really where I stand, whether I can still fund Hamner or even get other projects done. But in the short term, Hamner's my least important project of the ones I have for this current fiscal year, and I'll probably use money from that to, to make sure I get this taken care of and keep it moving.
Okay. And then my next question was, when do you anticipate the notice to proceed being granted on this project?
That's, well, notice to proceed wouldn't start until we get everything financially under, you know, squared away, and then, so certainly not till then, but realistically, it would be probably no later than mid-November, because what we're going to do is award contracts. We'll talk with All American and ask them to send all their submittals in, et cetera. So once we get all their submittals approved and done, and then we can give them a notice to proceed. The inspector on this project is Caltrans, not the city. So part of this is, is Caltrans is doing all the inspection work, working with the contractor. And so we're, we're not inspecting anything because it's, all this work has been done in their right-of-way. So they have the final say on, on how project finally gets done.
Okay. Because I noticed in the contract that they can begin work at the notice to proceed, and then this is another 45 days, so it's a relatively quick project. So that includes their work on doing the three lanes and our work as well, and the poles and everything? That's all 45 days?
No, this is just, the corner is a separate contract that Caltrans signed with them to do the, the widening on the off-ramp. The 45 days is just for that corner.
Okay.
And we're going to work with them on that because, again, since they're doing two projects at once and they want to coordinate, we realistically are not going to hold them to the 45 days exactly because it's, they're going to be going, doing one project at the same time as the other, and they want to finish at the same time. So it's just balancing that out, but we're not, we're not going to make it a 90-day project. We realistically may end up, because they're trying to get information about when the poles may come, we may not give them a notice to proceed based off their information until maybe towards the end of the year, because it's unrealistic to say, "Give us notice to proceed in mid-November," when they're not going to get their polls for these six weeks. So we have to coordinate with them once they get, and they're already working on getting some commitments from the manufacturer about when they may get these. There's a huge backlog, because my understanding is only one manufacturer of these poles at this point. Others went out of business. So there's a ton of backlog nationwide to get poles. And so they're trying to find out now really when they think they can commit to me. So we're going to balance out really when we say you're officially starting versus when they actually are going to start.
Okay.
We want to be realistic for them.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I was just trying to wrap my head around them doing both at the same time and what that timeline is going to be like. And I'm going to assume this is like in the evenings, or, so it's not a huge impact like on school traffic since we're already...
That has not been determined right now. If it's during the day is when they're doing the work, because that's what was conditioned to do the work on the Caltrans portion. So we matched what they were doing, but there's discussions about maybe we do this at night, be a lot less of an impact, and that's what we're having now is those talks. Can we arrange that and what additional expenses we may have to incur because of having their inspector be there for after-hours?
Okay, yeah. So as long as that's on the radar, you know, the communication as far as what's going on now has been good with the school district, but the impacts, you know, just adding another pretty severe impact to traffic in that area is going to be a nightmare for some people, so. And then one just point of information, what is a spandrel?
That, Ms. Newton probably know better than I am, but basically it's the...
Yeah. If you could show me, please.
I can provide a point for you. Good thing.
Uh-huh.
Is it right? I would say, yeah, I'm asking you. Yes. Yes, I'm asking. It should be right here. Because I was, I was pointing at this one on this side and that one on that side. Basically, you have your curb return, and then you have the, the concrete in, in the, in the, you have your concrete here, which is, which basically is, you know, allows the flow of water to come through. But this is your spandrels, which is the concrete right in this area here, adjacent to the curb return, which is the sidewalk.
Okay. Just for information purposes, checking up on somebody. All right. Thank you.
We got educated. Kevin?
Really nothing, but thank you. This has been a long time coming. Really appreciate the deal you worked out. I like that it's being widened. I like that the lights, all that stuff. I mean, it's, it's one of those projects that give you gray hair and, well, no, it doesn't give you gray hair, sorry.
Appreciate your time.
Anyway, thank you. And Robin asked the questions I had, so.
Craig?
Just for some clarification, so I can feel a little better about just process, that my first concern was issuing a contract without funding in place, which is basically what we're doing.
Well, again, we're, we're, yes, we're, we're going to provide it to them, give them the contract, go through the process of signing it, providing all the, the backup information, their, their bid documents, or essentially their, their bond information, et cetera, insurance. And again, that usually takes a couple weeks at most. But yes, it's seeking authorization because I can't technically send them a letter until I have proof that council has approved the project. So that's, the only reason I'm bringing it now is just to get the process of getting the money sooner. Otherwise, I would have waited.
I guess that part of that question's for John. Is that any, any problem with that?
No, I mean, I suppose theoretically, since it's a public hearing at November the 7th, you could say, "No, we're not going to amend the capital improvement project budget." But I think that that's fairly unlikely. I think the risk is negligible.
All right. I just want to make sure we're on solid ground in doing that.
Flipside of the answer is, we've entered into a contract and not going into what the potential ways of getting out of it. We're, we're bound by a contract, and they'll move forward. We'd, we'd have to pay for it from some source, and if you didn't amend the capital improvement but, project budget, we'd look at something else.
Okay.
And the, and the money by and large is coming from Caltrans grant.
I just want to make sure we're okay process-wise with that. One also to compliment you, because I remember years ago when this was going to be a, a project, I think we originally voted it down because it was going to wipe out our entire Measure A budget.
Yeah.
And for you to get our share down from well over a half a million or $600,000 to $130,000 is a good job on your part.
I do want to give kudos to our representative district aide, Syed Raza. He's been a huge advocate for us in these meetings that we have to whittle down these requirements for the standards that Caltrans has. So he's, and he's doing a great job on the other projects we're all trying to do on Second Street and Sixth Street, meaning normally staff wants 100% all-brand-new everything like the current code. And Syed's been our advocate, saying that this is just a fix. This is not us doing the work, meaning Caltrans. So he's been huge in keeping these costs reasonable. So I really appreciate his efforts on our part.
So go back to your little pointer. You had answered Councilman Hannah's question. The trail fencing is going to stop at that point where we see it, correct?
Yes.
And then you mentioned an asphalt walkway?
Yes, a sidewalk.
Okay. But asphalt, not concrete?
I'm sorry, concrete. Yes, concrete.
Okay, so it's, we're going to do it?
Concrete, yeah.
Concrete.
It's going to be too standard. Yes, correct. My apologies.
Okay. And the, what is the, where's the limit for Caltrans right-of-way? Is it at that end of the horse trail fencing?
Actually, no. It's quite, it's almost probably 150 feet. It's out of this picture.
Coming this way?
Yeah. Is actually their right-of-way.
Wow, okay.
What they call their access control.
All right. So how, how will you make the transition from horse trail that will stop, right, or, I'm sorry, pedestrian equestrian trail that will stop at that point for equestrian and make the transition to concrete sidewalk?
Well, our larger project that we didn't want to include this would be to basically change that out to a permanent sidewalk. But there, as you know, there's potential future project that may do that for us. So we purposely didn't include that in that project because we knew somebody else may be doing it for us. Otherwise, for right now, it would just transition.
Okay.
It would just stop here as, as concrete, and this, the DG stays as is.
And should we have some signage posted?
We will have...
For the equestrian?
We'll have signage at the beginning of the trail indicating
Okay.
That pedestrian only.
All right.
We want to make sure we're at least doing our part. What they're expecting us to do is, until we do get that change from DG, like I said, I'd rather, if somebody else can pay for it, I'd rather let them do it than me do it.
Okay. Thank you, Chad.
A couple of things, Chad. So they're, they're going to make this pedestrian crossway, and they're going to put the pedestrian allowance for the lights so they cross, just like on the, on the north side.
Correct.
On the other side of the freeway, is that also us that's going to put the bed, the bed crossing over there on the on-ramp side?
You talking about here or on the other?
No, on the other side.
Yeah.
Because there is none over there.
Correct. That's the other project I'm currently working on, trying to get through them, is doing, because we're doing the widening on Second Street to have a dedicated right-turn lane going onto the freeway.
Right.
We have tried to get two dedicated right-turn lanes, a right and a through and a dedicated right. They've already basically said that's not going to occur, but most likely if we go later on, we can get them to approve that. So we're basically just trying to get the improvement done, and then we'll argue later on that should be two right-turn lanes onto the freeway.
Okay.
Part of that condition that they've already put on us is that we actually have to, as part of that project, all this sidewalk has to be concrete, and we have to put that in as part of our project that eventually will get approved there.
Okay.
So we're already got that portion included, but it will include the pedestrian poles on the other, on the on-ramp, on that section, too. All new poles will be placed over there because we're going to do the actual sidewalk. It's not going to be dirty anymore. That was a condition they put on us to do an improvement in order to get them to consider our project.
Okay. And to, if I were to clarify what Councilman Hannah said, that our horse trail on the west side of Second Street probably stops about Easy Up. Yeah, where the Easy Up is, so there is no...
It jumps, actually. There's a trail and there's not a trail.
Yeah, but essentially, you can't go much past Easy Up
Right.
Out there on that side, and so...
Redwood.
Yeah, okay. So other than that, and I think Robin answered my other questions about the dates, I'm concerned, though, on this project, and I know it's, it's going to be based upon the contractors, Caltrans, but if you have to coordinate, we got to coordinate also if this goes into January. I believe Northern College is on a semester program, so their classes would probably start up again in, it's probably January or February, so we want to be out of that mess when their semester starts, too.
Well, that's why we're hoping to convince Caltrans to do it as night work, and that it shouldn't be an issue. But again, they haven't bought off on that yet.
Okay. Do we have any cards on this, Sheriff?
No cards on this item.
I have no cards. Bring back the, unless council has any other questions of staff? Yeah, we have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Can you please vote on the item? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And now this is a public hearing. You simply need a motion to continue this, Chad. This is, have a motion to continue. We have a second. You want Berwin or Greg, you have one of two.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to city council, city manager, staff communications. Andy, you've been real quiet. Anything?
Nothing, John.
Nothing? John, anything? Kevin?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First off, I was over to the American Legion on Saturday, and they have requested, Brian, this is for you, and I meant to call you about it. I apologize. I don't mean to blindside you. They're wondering what it would take to get the American Legion parking lot, which actually is our parking lot, striped. If we're thinking about using the old library building, is there a possibility we might be able to get that striped? Would that be cost prohibitive, or?
Which is not something that's in the budget. So I mean, it would be something we would have to appropriate funds for.
Something you can look at?
We can look at what the cost would be for that, and
Because I know that...
I'll have to go back to the original agreement, because I think even though, because we allow them to use it, they're required to pay for half of it.
This came up when I was on the commission, and I think that's exactly what's supposed to happen.
Part of the, I think, a maintenance agreement, so.
Yeah, so.
But we can look and get the cost and bring that back.
Can we just look at that? Because I know that whole area is up for grabs. And then, I know I talked to Andy and the mayor the other day about this, but I'm, I'm really concerned that the high-voltage wires along River and in the, along River Road and in the river, I feel like that's getting, I don't know, I just feel like it's getting away from us, and we're not doing everything we can do. I'm a little concerned that Caltrans or CalFire is saying, "Well, it's not really our job to get involved," but at the same time, I'm concerned that it is a high-fire[1716.57] to get involved, but at the same time, I'm concerned that is a high-fire area. And I also wanna make sure that we don't let anything drop through the cracks in terms of either one of those proposed projects. And is there some way that we, as a council, can know that, do we need to attend a meeting? Do we not need to attend a meeting? I know there's the guy that's emailing us all that has all this information, but I'm concerned, I would just hate six months down the line to go, well, if you'd only been here, only done this. I'm also not comfortable that CalFire isn't weighing in on this because it's an obvious fire danger, if they have. So if you could maybe let us know what's going on or if we could just, I mean, I may be totally wrong, I just wanna make sure nothing's falling through the cracks, we're doing everything we can to underground both projects if we can do, if we have some say in that. Should we attend a meeting up north? I mean, I'm just not sure where we're at with this.
Go ahead, Andy, if you want to.
Well, the only thing I can say is that the city has, on two separate occasions, provided input to the process. And recently, the PUC issued a supplemental environmental impact report. And in that report, they addressed the city's comments or objections pertaining to the previous report. I think there is a limited time now. I think, I don't have the dates, but there is a date where they are going to have a meeting to discuss it. And again, with respect to the involvement of CalFire, I did talk with the battalion chief and the division chief regarding this. Unfortunately, this is not an item that they comment on. If CalFire, as an organization, has to take a position on this matter, that is something that would have to come from their Sacramento headquarters, not, not the division chief or the battalion chief that don't believe this is their jurisdiction to provide or comment on this, on this process.
Hasn't the, hasn't the, CalFire, though, designated, some new designations at the riverbed in particular, is now considered a high-fire area in light of the Montecito Fire, which was caused by high voltage wires? And so maybe they won't, I mean, I totally get that state agencies kinda don't wanna talk to other state agencies and I completely disagree with that position. It's wrong and it's not our fault, not your fault. But if that area is now designated a high-fire area, I'm very concerned if they're gonna put high-voltage wires there. I'm also concerned, I wanna, I mean, do we need to attend the meeting for the River Road project to personally say, please, underground this? Is there, is there anything else we can do to underground both these projects?
Okay, the River Road project is, speaking of that, Saco City project, oh...
Circle City project, right.
Okay, that's the River Road project.
Right.
Okay, now...
So there's two, I'm talking about both. We're having to split our offense, I think, I mean, I'm talking about both projects. Both, I believe, need to be underground. But I'm concerned that CalFire, I mean, it has, my understanding is it's been declared a high-fire area along the river and River Road. My hope is we'll do everything we can to make sure that those wires go underground. Is there anything that we're missing, anything we can do to plead that case?
Okay, on both two projects, we have, again, on the Riverside Reliability Transmission Project, we did provide city comments and objections with respect to the last environmental impact report that was issued.
Right.
A recent subsequent environmental impact report has been issued and I think there is a, which addressed the city's concerns. Unfortunately, they are not doing anything, making any changes as a result of those, those comments. They have issued a supplemental report that I believe is in the process of being here, being heard, and that process is, John might have, I think, there is a, perhaps not a lawsuit, but some sort of a dispute going on with Aruba Valley on this.
Actually, the objections which have, I think we've all seen, which have been filed with the PUC, the only additional thing that we could potentially do, and actually, that's where we should have talked about in closing, the only, the only thing we can potentially do, we've been asked by the opponents, the landowner opponents, to the project who have their opposition before with PUC now, is like Corona did, just simply add our name as a interested party, which, I mean, which doesn't cost us anything and it's not like litigation, it's the feeling of the lawyer representing them is that instead of the PUC simply looking at landowners, that the fact that there are public agencies that have concerns as well and their citizens that might have some impact.
So, I mean, I understand all that, is it, would it be helpful for us to go to their next meeting and when it's appropriate and lodge a personal, you know, plea not to do, to do what we are asking them to do as representatives of our citizens?
I can ask the attorney who represents them whether that will provide some support.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that if this thing is jammed down our throats, that we have done everything we possibly can to represent our interest to the best of our ability. And we may be doing that, I just have this feeling that we're not, there's something else we can do, so to get on a desk and jump up and down and go, no, no, no.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm getting the, and I don't think that we need to agendize it until we actually do it, but if I'm getting the direction to talk to them about what's necessary to add us as real party in interest...
Okay, so it's a step.
I can do that.
Okay.
He didn't seem to think there was much else we could do, but that that might be helpful, at least when they're along with Corona, even though it's not our territory.
All right, thank you.
Craig? Stop it? Berwin?
I'm open.
I do have one before I go around the room. I wanna thank Brian, you and your crew, that was a nice job they did for the Norco affair, by the way, Parker Rex, Patty, Keith, Richard, and Jesse, they worked hard up there for the time they have and that to make sure that Bill and Fran, they were well taken care of. So, kudos, I think Franny, I know, has another three years left on that contract and she's trying to make this thing work, so good for her. Cheryl, anything?
Last day to register to vote for the November 6th election is Monday, October 22nd. Residents can register to vote online or at the city clerk's office.
Do we have any special event on the 22nd?
We also have a town, a Norco Community Town Hall meeting at Nellie Weaver Hall. The agenda is posted online and we do have additional information at the city clerk's office. City clerk's office is also an official vote-by-mail ballot drop-off location. Most, all residents should have received their vote-by-mail ballot by now, if that's how they've chosen to vote. So if you have questions on that, feel free to call my office and we can assist you with that process. And I believe that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
And I wanna say to the residents out there, if you don't wanna put two stamps on that vote-by-mail, it's easy to drop it off at City Hall. Matt, anything? Chad, anything more?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we have lots of projects going on. I did wanna inform council regarding two projects. First, the bluff storm drain project that we have going on, they've completed most of the work for the storm drain itself and want, they're gonna be, I've authorized them to do the paving this Saturday, they're gonna get the whole segment done between River Road and Vine, so that'll all be finished, knock on wood, this Saturday. They just asked for that extra day to go ahead and just get the project done and I figured I just wanna get them out of that area. It's been a big impact to folks trying to go through that area, so Saturday, I've authorized to do that. So if you see work, that's why they're there, it's because we authorized it. And if you have any issues or anything, definitely send it my way, but that'll get done, which is great. And then I wanna make sure we're going into it, there, on Temescal project, our water main project, I, at some point, and we've talked about trying to make sure that we maintain as much as possible, at least a flagman, so that we can get through people through that area. They've posted it, so it's not through traffic managed because they're trying to only allow the local folks to come through, so they don't have a ton of traffic coming through, but they do that. There's gonna be specific points during this project where we're going to have to close the road entirely to get certain connections done. So I know I emphasized we would, for the project, keep one lane open, but there will be, I wanna reemphasize that, there will be small, short periods, one or two days at a time where they'll have to block off the road. Mainly, that's when they connect into Fourth Street, that entire intersection of Fourth Street to Temescal will be closed to do that connection because we're right in the middle of the road. There's no real way to get people around there. Also, when we get to Fifth Street and connect on that end, it'll be the same thing. I also have one change order that I'm doing, right, that I've authorized, that basically if I require them to have the road open to do, basically it's doing a two-inch service, they'll, it'll cost me double the amount if I have them maintain traffic control, et cetera, to do their project, because they're going from one side of the road to the other to do the service. And I can save us half the price if I allow them to do a closure that only lasts half the day. So I am considering that right now. I just wanna make you aware that there might be a small section, it's basically in your coal and Temescal, basically it's gonna be south of coal where that closure will be. So people will still be able to come in both directions, they just won't go all the way through. So I wanted to know, I wanted you to make sure you knew if you saw that or people complaining it's closed, it's meant to be a half-day closure and it saves us money on the project. Otherwise, I pay double for them to, basically take twice as long to do the work. So that was my rationale as far as authorizing that closure for a short period, is just to avoid that additional cost. So I just wanna make sure I clarified that. I know it's in the past that this project they'll maintain, but there will be specific points and times and the contractor will have notices up, have placards down at the next intersection so people understand that the road's closed ahead, but it's required as far as part of this project. So I just wanna make sure I put that out there now versus later. Absolutely.
So a quick question for you, because they do have the road closed signs at both ends, but if you get there early enough, you can still get through pretty easy.
Right.
I guess my question would be to you, when it's gonna be a full closure for real, what kind of notifications are we going to provide to the residents? So that, because if, like, if I got down there and it's really closed and I had to turn around in my truck, I'd be really mad.
Right.
So, because there's not room for it.
So, for example, if they're closing it at Fourth Street at Temescal, they're gonna put placards up at both sides of Fourth Street at the next intersection, so they says in advance, road closed ahead, so that they know, if you go that way, you're gonna be turning around. Obviously, residents who live along that stretch, they'll know, they'll be able to, they can come in, but that's, they'll try to flag and put the placards up at the next closest intersection there. And then same thing on Temescal, they let people know there's not gonna be an outlet if you're coming south on Temescal to Fourth, you're not gonna be able to get through. So we'll, we'll tell people at, like, it's coal and I don't remember the streets there, and then definitely at Fifth Street that it's, that's closed ahead. So again, we'll require them to put as much information as possible. People still not read or not pay attention to or not think it's that type of closure, but we'll make sure it says complete closure ahead and we'll work with the contractor to make sure it's done the right way.
And would this be something that would be one of the text messages or an email or something?
Yes.
As well, ahead of time?
We would send a NICSIL out and provide that information, saying it's closed today, please use alternate routes.
Okay.
So when we do that type of thing, yes.
Thank you.
Berwin, anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, I still have a question for Chad.
Go ahead.
Why would that be a change order?
It was a two-inch service that wasn't in the plans, so it's a change order. And we, and none of the, and so therefore we have to pay for the additional work and it's not planned. The one-inch services they're doing, boring, but they're not, for the two-inch service, they're not gonna do boring, mainly because they have to go underneath a storm drain that's near the residence. So basically, they're just gonna saw cut the road, plate it, and, you know, they're gonna go in phases and they have to go from one side of the road to the other and have traffic control. And I said, why don't we just block the road off? Do it, how much time would it take? It would take half the time. They could just quickly cut it, dig it up, get underneath, put the copper down, get underneath the storm drain, bring it up to the property and get out of there as quick as possible.
So why was the two-inch service missed?
It was a service we didn't know was there when we did the design. It was one of the services that was buried underground, we just didn't find it when we did our inspection to identify all the services and it was just not caught. We got a lot of services out there just buried and we just miss them time to time. But in most cases, it's not a, it's not a big deal, because let's say if it was a one-inch service, it'd be a lot, I already have a line item for it and I'd already have a designed price for it, but in this case, we don't have any two-inch service as part of this project, so it was a whole different...
Do we bill those people for their water, for their two-inch service?
We do, yeah. I verified it was an active service. It just was missed as far as, by the design engineer, as far as being there.
I'll let it go with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Chad. Steven?
Stop it.
Mr. Petrie?
Just a reminder, we, if you don't know, we'll have a NICSIL out on this, but there'll be a Second Street closure, I-15, for work. And it'll be from about 10 o'clock at night to 4:00 in the morning. And then they'll be doing prep work on Thursday and they'll be flagging traffic this Thursday and next Thursday on Second Street. And I don't know if you've noticed on the I-15, the really large curters that are being prepped and brought in, and that's part of that project.
Cool. Gina?
Yes, I'd like to let you know that a long-time employee will be retiring at the end of the month, Julia Murray, 22 years of service, and we'll be having a celebration on October 25th, you're invited, it's a luncheon. And just to summarize, the finance department has lost, if you wanna say lost, about 33 years of history in the last year or so. So I'm just very grateful to the council, to Andy, for all the support and succession planning. We have a great team that's followed behind them and we're really looking forward to the future. And Julia kind of was in charge of $12 million of service coming in, of revenue coming in in that area, the lead utility billing clerk. And with that being said, too, we have some surprises for you in the future. The one that I can talk about tonight is our cost allocation plan and fee study, more, most importantly, our fee study, that is a good five to six-month process. So we're starting that in November, it might be a little less, it might be done in February or January, but it is a lot of staff's time. So I wanna thank staff ahead of time for all the hours they'll be working on that and we'll be bringing it to you in a budget study session or a study session in the early spring for you to review the process as well. And if you have any questions about how that works, it is complicated and we'll have the consultant here to brief you at that study session in terms of how all the components come together. And then, like I said, we've got some surprises coming in the next few months, so I don't wanna jinx them yet, but it's technology-based, so I don't wanna jinx it.
Positive surprises, right?
Positive surprises.
Okay, those I can have. You're kinda scaring me here, okay?
And just a big thank you to Matt, because it can't happen without him, so.
Don't make us, don't swallow that.
I know, but it's true.
I know, I know. Eric, anything over there from, since your partner deserted you again? Thank you. With that, poor Jern.